Okay, y'all ready? Okay, good morning. I'll call to order the August 4th, 2025 regular meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. And as always, our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance. And then after that, our Sheriff, Wilkie, will come forward for the invocation. So if we ever want to please stand for the pledge.
Proverbs, Chapter 17, verse 22, says that a joyful heart is good medicine, but a crushed spirit dries up the bones. The wicked accepts a bribe in secret to pervert the ways of justice, but the discerning sets his face towards wisdom. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather in such a place as this and do the business of the people for the people. Please be with these leaders today, myself included. As we conduct this business, set our hearts to be discerning and our minds towards wisdom. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I appreciate all the work that you and your staff did over the last week. Okay, we don't have a public hearing today. Next is public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And I have one person signed up to speak, Ellen Pitt. Welcome, Ellen.
I'm the only one. So I'm just here real briefly. Last week, on July 24th, an article ran in the local paper about cam bracelets. And it was kind of negative at the top, saying that Waynesville's the only people that support cam bracelets. That's not true. We've had support from you all, from Swain County Commissioners, from various agencies and organizations, and certainly from a lot of defense loggers. So it was kind of a little bit misleading. And I didn't like that they used the term declined. You have never declined to support this endeavor. And we have not asked you directly to financially support it because we weren't ready for that. We did get ready. We certainly have met with Mr. Moorhead, which the paper did not know or ask about. And so he has been very generous with his time and tried to help us look for creative ways to do this funding without cost to the taxpayers, if we could avoid that. So thank you. And I just wanted to be sure that you all knew that I was not interviewed for that article. The cam bracelet provider was not interviewed. I don't think any of you all were interviewed. But the article went on nonetheless. So if we had been interviewed, or even if this paper had read the June 24 article in the Smoky Mountain News, they would know that we were having conversations with various individuals and agencies to seek non-taxpayer monies, hopefully from some ABC revenues, or that's what the state bill was about. The article also states that the Sober Operator Act of 2025 would allow for pre-trial cam bracelets. Pre-trial cam bracelets have been the law since 2012. And you all well know it because I've been up here yelling for 10 years. So you've heard this not for the first time. So there's a lot to be learned there about getting your information from the right place. And so thank you for all of your support for our pilot project back in the day and for the concept, for listening to that concept of recovery and safety through technology. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your support. And I'm sorry that other people didn't recognize that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, okay. Ms. Pitt's the only one I had sign up to speak, so. Okay, we'll move on to constituent concerns. Jennifer, do you have any?
No, most everything's been addressed so far.
No, just, I think she touched on a commentary that kind of struck a note with me is folks kind of need to be careful where they get their information from. We had a situation with a private business a couple of weeks ago, and it kind of filtered down. Some folks tried to lay it at the county government's feet, and it just wasn't true. So there was a private business that had a problem, and that's what it was. It was a private business, and we had nothing to do with it. So it is important to get your information from the right places and have it correct.
Okay. You got anything, Randy? You got anything there? You, no? Okay, all righty. Yeah, if you get your news from social media, you're lost. That's all I can say. You are lost. Okay, our next order of business is administrative agency reports and presentations. And the first is a tourism update with our Haywood County Tourism Director, Karina Ruffiere. Yay.
Okay, cool. Well, good morning, everybody. It's been a minute since I've been here. So I do have a little bit of a mishmash of a presentation for you this morning. I'll go through it relatively quickly, but if you have questions, please just holler. Just wanted to touch base on quite a few things. So let's see. The first is you have a copy of our 2024 annual report. We do our annual reports on a calendar year, not the government fiscal year, because most of our business partners work on a calendar year, and this makes a lot more sense to them. I'm not going to go through this report in detail with you. I just wanted to give it to you, highlight it. It is available online. And I encourage anybody to reach out to our office if you have questions about it. That's it on 24. I was here a lot in '24. Then I was going to jump ahead to '25. Looking at where we are with our occupancy tax collections so far, the bright purple line is our 2025 collections. No surprise, we are slightly down from the prior fiscal year, which we have all been tracking that since Helene. So far through May, we're down just shy of 10%, which is about what we had expected, and we are working very hard to counteract that. Then I wanted to highlight really quickly our 2025 ICE Festival, in part because we have a new tool. And I need to go through these preliminary slides to walk through our new tool with you. So as a reminder, it was a four-day event all over the county, which was a really fantastic collaboration between so many different partners. And we can see that a lot of our visitors went all over the county, too. We sold tickets to the Maggie Valley portion of the festival. And this heat map, and I don't know why they do green on green, but you can see that a fair amount of ticket sales, of course, we're in our local area there. The bright red is the majority of ticket sales, but all those green hotspots, even as far south as Tampa and Miami, we were selling tickets to our ICE Festival weekend. We did enjoy a 34% increase from '24 to '25, which is great growth. We always like to do surveys, and we asked our visitors who came to the weekend, what'd you do over the course of the weekend? And you can see on this chart, they went to a variety of different events, again, all over the county. But my favorite two are the last two. 44% of our visitors went shopping in our local stores, and 51% went dining in our local restaurants. That's the number one reason we do events like this, is to drive visitors to our local businesses, to invest back in them. We also asked them, were you a local, or a day tripper, or an overnight? And this is super helpful data that you'll see we leverage in the tool in a moment. So about half the people that came out to the festival were locals, and that's a good thing. It's great to have something fun for our locals to do at a very... Most of the events were free or modest cost. The other half the people were from outside the area. Of the folks who spent the night, over 77% spent two or more nights, which again is a pretty strong investment back in our economy. And so we have this new tool that lets us look at tourism-based economic impact. And all the data I just shared with you lets us use this tool intelligently. It's called the Event Impact Calculator, and hopefully I'll come back and share more calculations with you in the future. It was created as a partnership between Tourism Economics and Destinations International. So it is super focused on the tourism economy only, and you'll note that it's going to take out any local spending. So we're really truly just looking at what visitors are bringing to us. This is used literally all over the world, not just in the U.S. They have a different calculator for Canada and a different calculator for South America because the taxes are different there. And our calculator is specifically set up for Haywood County. So does looking at our sales tax, our occupancy tax. So it's really looking uniquely at us. If you haven't seen a tool like this before, forgive me. I do put this in because a lot of us don't know. There's multiple types of economic impact. Direct, in this case, is the immediate spending from visitors. So visitor comes, we saw they went dining, they went and had breakfast at Main Street Diner. That is direct impact. Indirect impact is the business-to-business spending. So Main Street Diner's so busy, they have to go to Christopher Farms and restock. That's the indirect. And then induced is the household spending. So that's the employees at Main Street Diner, Christopher Farms, et cetera, going out and spending because they had a job. All three of those combined are total impact. So we're going to look at our direct impact and our total impact for the ICE Festival weekend. The first thing it calculates for us is who came. So I put in those numbers that I shared you. We feel pretty confident, this is a very conservative estimate. We put in only the Maggie Valley ticket sales because that is hard data that we collected. We also put in our survey data so we know how many people were locals, how many people spent the night, and how many people were day trippers. And so the calculator spits back out these numbers for us. So we know 1,664 total attendees were visitors. It's removing locals from the calculator. 433 spent the night, and 1,231 were here for a day. And it estimates the room demand, which is a fantastic tool, at 885 room nights. Our direct impact just from visitors, just for this four-day weekend, 110 jobs supported, 17,000 in local taxes, and $434,000 plus in direct business spending. That includes spending at places like grocery stores, gas stations, as well as what you would typically think of as our tourism-based businesses. The total impact is a little higher. At 138 jobs supported, 18,000 in local taxes, and $566,000 in total sales from a four-day weekend, just from visitors. So we really like this tool. We're looking forward to leveraging it more. The number one thing I'll share about it is you've got to have good data to put in because if you don't have the good data put in, what you get out is just a guess. So we feel very confident, again, we know the ticket sales, we did our post-surveys, but we will happily work with any partners that have data to leverage this and see what our visitors are doing for our economy. And then, since I'm here, mark your calendars for the 2026 ICE Festival Weekend, January 29th through February 1st. Jumping ahead, we have done a lot in the past six months on both our Master Plan Project and the new Visit Haywood brand. And to start with the fun Fat Burger Month because our Master Plan said our visitors and our locals want to see culinary events. So we pulled one off last February. 14 participating restaurants. If a participant ate six or more burgers, they got a free T-shirt. So 160 people ate six burgers in three weeks, which I think is kind of impressive. My husband and I did it, but we shared them. I know at least one couple ate all 14. But my favorite thing about this was 100% of those participants, those 160 participants, went to a new restaurant. So this did exactly what it was supposed to, and that was getting our people out and about and supporting our locally owned and operated businesses. You don't get to see a lot of our advertising because everything we do, or most of it rather, is outside of Haywood County trying to get people to come here. So these are just a few examples of some of our print advertising. We have ads in our state, the Visit North Carolina Travel Guide. We have a billboard in Columbia, South Carolina. And we also do a lot of digital ads. Again, you're not going to see most of those because we exclude Haywood County, but we target all over the southeast, a variety of different digital ads. And then jumping ahead, we always look at data. If you haven't gathered yet, I kind of like numbers. But they're super helpful. They allow us to be smart and strategic and invest our money in a way that makes the most sense. So we subscribe to a short-term vacation rental platform called AirDNA. And that is really hard to read. But it looks at how are your bookings next year, rather, this year compared to how they were last year? So when we ran this report in May of '25, our short-term vacation rental bookings were pacing down. 20% for July, 19% for August, and 21% for September. That wasn't good. We also can look at how all of western North Carolina is doing. Very similar data. The list of counties included in this dataset are at the bottom of the slide. So it's all of the smaller western North Carolina counties. We don't look at Buncombe because they're just very difficult for us to compare to. They were also pacing pretty significantly down at 16%, 17%, and 11%. So it's not just us. And I think that is a key thing to point out. All of western North Carolina is struggling, and actually, the entire country is. And I'll get to that in one moment because I forgot about this slide. We also saw that our booking lead time has drastically dropped. And this is a national trend, not just a Haywood County trend. So in 2023, our average booking window was almost two months. So that means I'm booking in March for a June trip. But in '25, our booking window dropped to a month. Huge decrease. We can also see that nationally. So this is from Zartico, and it is looking at the whole country. Looking now at hotel data instead of short-term vacation rental data, you can see the occupancy, the future pacing for the occupancy is down across the whole country. And budget travelers in particular are on wait-and-see behaviors. Families skipped spring trips for summer travel. And this short-term booking window, travelers are waiting for deals. So we took all of this data and quite a bit more that I'm not going to overwhelm you with, and we created a brand-new campaign called Open Skies, Open Roads, Open Haywood. I will note that all of western North Carolina is dealing a little bit with, a lot bit, with a perception challenge of that we're still very much recovering from Helene. And while we are, and while the recovery will take years, we are also very much open and ready for business. So this was an intentional decision. It's a digital campaign because we pulled it together pretty quickly, running from mid-June through the end of September, offering that deal. If a visitor books a qualifying midweek stay, that also came from our Master Plan, they can earn Elk Bucks, which are essentially a digital gift card only spendable at Haywood County businesses. We had 110 local businesses sign up to participate. It's no cost to the business. This is being targeted in a little bit closer area. This map on the screen with the stars that shows all the target markets we typically advertise in. The circle is highlighting where this particular campaign is in. Again, for a short summer campaign, we wanted to target those travelers that can easily hop in the car and get here. It's on Google, Meta, YouTube, Expedia, and Datafy. And you can see an example of we created a new ad, and we've got video ad, rather, and digital ads. And if technology cooperates, I'd love to play the video ad for you. My team and I have that whole song stuck in our heads. It was the song itself. We were able to partner with Buddy Melton, and he wrote and sang the song. So it is very much a Haywood County piece. And it was a little quiet. So maybe after the meeting, Haven can shoot you the link in case you want to listen to it more and get it stuck in your heads as well. But we're really excited to have a Haywood County video, Haywood County ads. And I will say, I ran the pacing last week, and July dropped from negative 20% to negative .1. So I'm going to take that as a zero. And we're not ahead of where we were last year, but we made a huge jump. We also saw gains in August. And I'll have a full report on that at our TDA board meeting at the end of August. But it's making a difference, and we're very pleased to be able to do that. Completely switching gears again, you know, we run our grant program every year. And at the May board meeting, the board voted to award $237,000 to 16 different projects just in tourism promotion and legacy event sponsorship, so on the marketing side. Our new capital grant application deadline was just last week. So we received eight applications, and those are in review. They'll be awarded at the September board meeting. And then we will have a second round of marketing grants available opening, oh my gosh, next week. So need to get going on that. And looking ahead, we spoke briefly about this. The one-year milestone of Helene is fast approaching. And based on historical experience, looking at other destinations that have been through pretty significant natural disasters, we know there will be media coverage of the event. It tends to be a rehashing of what happened a year ago. So there is a very strong effort between Visit North Carolina, the governor's office, Explore Asheville, Visit Haywood, and a variety of other local destinations to do what we can to collaborate, to help drive, look at how much we've gotten done in this past year messaging as opposed to this is what happened a year ago. Explore Asheville's the lead on this, and we are extraordinarily thankful for their leadership in it. And I will keep you updated on what that might mean. But we will work very hard to try to do our best to manage that messaging. Looking ahead, we are working very hard on our Master Plan. It's a 10-year project. We're only six months into it, so we've got a ways to go. And this is one of our biggest projects for this year. We are completely rebuilding the Visit Haywood website. It's been about 12 years since it's been purpose-built from the ground up. So it's a pretty significant project. But you can appreciate technology's changed just a little bit in the last 12 years. So it's time to rebuild that site with a consumer-focused front and a technology-focused front. So that's going to keep us busy for the next year or so. And that is my six-month whirlwind summary.
Thanks for coming this morning. Lots of really good news. I've seen across the region, in different counties, that I think everybody is trying to get the message out that we are recovering. It will continue for a long time, but we're still very much open. There are lots and lots of things to do here. And so I recently, it's been a couple of months ago, did an interview with Rex from LOS. And that's one of the things that I said is that we've made such great strides in getting back open and recovering. So I appreciate the messaging especially on that. And we appreciate the hard work of the TDA, the entire staff.
Anybody else? I just was wondering, so you had 14 restaurants that were participating in the burger? Who are they, can you say? I mean...
That was in the February 25th, Fat Burger Month, and that was the inaugural one. So I'm anticipating more restaurants will sign up for '26. I'm not going to remember them all, but the Scotsman, Boojum, Red Fox, Southern Porch, Main Street Diner.
Springdale.
Springdale, thank you.
So when...
Yeah, Church Street Depot, I think.
So when next year comes along, where would people find those restaurants? On your website, or...?
Yes, fatburgermonth.com.
Okay.
You got to have fun with stuff like that. But yes, it's free to the restaurants. We just asked them to come up with a fun, unique burger. And I think some of them didn't quite understand. And now that we have a year under our belt, we'll see more sign up to participate.
Okay, that sounds cute. Okay.
It was a fun event. We went out just for a burger one night, just to see what we could try. So it was very unusual. They were very big. There was a burger that had an egg on it. There was one that had a fork in it that held it together. So yeah, lots of things.
See Tommy, and that helps your beef industry.
Are you going to buy? Are you buying after the meeting?
Well, it's not this month, so it'll be in February.
It'll be March, it'll be March, next year, March of '26.
You're making us all hungry.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Well, thank you, Karina. And it sounds like y'all are doing great work, and you're keeping everybody busy. So that's good. You're getting the word out. It's great. The next item in the administrative agency reports and presentations will be the update on Public Safety Radio Tower Project, and our Chief Information Officer, Joey Webb Jr., is here this morning.
Good morning. Just wanted to give you guys a brief update on the Public Safety Radio Tower Project that we've been working on for a while. I think the last time I spoke to you, we had talked about how the hurricane had ruined the access to the site. And the property owner had gotten that repaired. And we had just completed the geotechnical survey, but didn't have the results back. I'm pleased to say that we got the geotechnical report back, and everything came back without any issues. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service have done a complete project review, and they found no outstanding concerns. We had to do two surveys for endangered species. The elk toe mussel, which you're familiar with. We've run into that on several projects. We did a survey for that and found nothing, so that was good news. Also, we did not run into the bat that we normally run into, but we ran into a small flower called the Small World Pagonia. So we had to do a survey for the flower, which is known particularly to habitat old logging roads. And as you know, the road that we're building is actually upgrading an old logging road. So we had to do a survey for that and found none of the endangered flowers there. So our environmental reviews have been finished. Just late last week, we got the preliminary site drawings and the drawings of the road design. Those have been approved by us and sent back for the final plans. So our next steps will be to get the final plans back for approval, and we'll be ready to construct the road. Once we construct the road, the tower process itself should go pretty quickly. The shelter drawings for the building that will sit next to the tower for the equipment are... are currently underway as well, as are the, the tower design itself. They're working now finalizing the loading, which is a process where they look at all the antennas that are going to be there, and they decide where they're going to be on the tower, make sure that it's engineered to support the weight of all those antennas. So they're working on that now, and as soon as that's complete, they'll be able to finalize the tower design. So we are getting really close to be able to start construction. We're down to just finalizing design documents now, now that we've got all the environmental studies behind us and all the preliminary work behind us. So good news, and we're really excited that that's, that's starting to really show some progress and move forward.
Joey, with all of that being said, do you have an ETA on when you think it'll be up and running?
I have asked for an updated timeline, because some of these things did come in a little sooner than we expected. I have not received that yet, but I'll send you guys an email as soon as I do and let you know what that is. It was originally looking towards the end of the year. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some more time knocked off that. We'll, we'll see. It just depends on how long the design process takes and if we have to make any changes once they send us that final design.
Thank you for the update. I know it's just frustrating. I know we've been working on this for quite some time, seems like years ago, but, and then to hear that environmental stuff holds stuff like this up is a little frustrating, too. I mean, I think Commissioner Long said it some time ago, when are we going to start worrying about human lives versus a bat, or an elk toe muzzle, or a flower? You know? It's frustrating to me. I know that communication is key, especially in an emergency situation, and seems like we would worry more about that. But anyway, that's another conversation. But thank you for the, keep after it. I know there's a lot of folks that's looking forward to having that up and running. I know the sheriff's department will be glad to see it, and, and all of our radio folks. I know it's something I've been pushing for quite some time, and be glad to see it up and going.
Joey, with that design, you're talking about the way they're designing that, is that going to pretty well cover that whole area up there?
It will. I've got actually some coverage maps down in my office that we did as part of the study leading up to the tower. It actually covers the populated area of Lake Logan really well, and extends on down Highway 110 through the Bethel area, and even a few spots as far out as North Canton. So it's going to fill in quite a few spots that we've never had good coverage, particularly for fire and EMS. It's going to help the sheriff's office as well. Their radios, their frequencies are a little lower, so they carry farther. So they'll notice a big improvement in Lake Logan, but they don't have exactly the same dead spots that the fire departments do around Bethel and North Canton. They have a few of them, but it'll help, it'll help all of them, but we will see a huge increase for fire and EMS, because they have some of the biggest dead spots in that area. But law enforcement's had big dead spots, especially in Lake Logan. They can talk in the car, but once they get out of the car, they're pretty much on their own, and that should resolve that issue as well as several other problem areas.
Good deal. Joey, refresh my memory, the, the company that's building the tower, were they, they out of Charlotte area?
Greensboro.
Green, Greensboro, okay, I knew. Are they going to sub out any of that work to local contractors?
They are. They have actually, part of what we asked for in the project is anything that can be subbed out locally will be. So they'll be looking for local contractors. There's a few things, like constructing the actual tower, that we don't have any local contractors that are certified to do, so they'll have to reach out. There's only a few places in the nation that, that do that. But as far as constructing the road, doing the site prep, building the, you know, putting together the concrete pad the tower will sit on, fencing, all those things, they'll be using local contractors for those.
Kind of a side note on the environmental study, I think it's important to do that. I was talking to Commissioner Rogers, he, he mentioned about putting people first, but, you know, it is important to, to take care of these things. I, I don't think anybody here, just to reiterate, I don't think anybody here is wanting to plunder through those things, but I, I know I one time gave a solution to that. I know on the elk toe muzzle, we had a road washed out after Tropical Storm Fred, and right here, I made a solution, you know, get in the river with an onion sack and maybe harvest those elk toe muzzles and put them in a fish tank until the work's done, and then turn them back loose in there. There was some people took offense to that. I thought it was very humorous, but I kind of get to last life. I, I was in the county here about three weeks ago, and the state's going to replace a couple of bridges, and I stopped, actually got stopped on the bridge by a, a crew of people that was doing work there to get ready for the bridge. And they was looking over the side, and I looked down there, and there was scuba divers down there in the, in the riverbed. And I thought, well, that's interesting. So I asked a guy, I said, what in the world they doing? And he said, well, said, they're looking for those elk toe muzzles. And I said, really? And he said, oh, yeah. He said, they're going to harvest those things and reintroduce them in the stream above or below the work site while we're doing the work. And so they actually do that. And I, I was like, huh, that's interesting. So they were, they were actually had a scuba dive in town, there was five of them, down there crawling around, you know, looking for those elk toe muzzles, and they were, they were gathering those things up and going to, going to relocate them. So there are ways to, you know, coexist, but I, it does frustrate me, as long as Commissioner Rogers and others, that we sometimes are, seemingly, we get our cart before our horse, as old people used to say. And we, we've got to put people first, and certainly be good stewards of the land as well. We can do that, so, thank you.
Joey? So the, the road construction, if the design is pretty much done, when, when will the road construction start? And the reason I ask is, you know, with, this, it'll creep up on us, the weather will, where you can't do anything, because if they don't have it built by first of December, they might as well, it'll be March before they get started back again.
Yeah, the preliminary road design is complete. They'll come back now with the full plans, that'll have all the measurements and, and all the specifics as far as what type of coverage the road will have. Right now, we have just a survey drawing of the path of the road, so they're working very quickly, we hope within the next couple of weeks, to have that full plan. They'll present that to us for approval. As long as we don't see any issues with the final design, then they'll have our go-ahead to proceed with, with bidding that out as soon as they're ready. So I think, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be in good shape to have that moving. And quite honestly, because we're improving an existing road, there's going to be a lot of widening. There's one small section that has to be rerouted because it crosses another property. But minus that rerouting, most of the road is just widening what's there and improving what's there, so it won't, it won't, we don't expect a long construction process there, because they're not going to have to do a lot of land clearing, cutting trees, those kind of things, except in that area where they reroute that small section of the road.
And how wide will, will the road be, the road bed after, do you know? Are they shooting for like 12, or 16, 18?
I want to say 16, but don't hold that to me. I know we are designing it specifically to make sure we don't have any issues getting a concrete truck there or a tractor trailer, because the sections of steel that build the tower will have to come on a tractor trailer, so it'll be wide enough to, to handle that traffic.
Oh, wow, okay. And then, have we, have we, have you heard from any, I guess, cellphone companies that might want to co-locate there?
We've gotten some interest from several. We don't have official agreements in place. They want to, a lot of them want to see the final design before they'll make a, an official commitment. But we have been working with several companies and sending along progress to them and design updates to them, to see if, if they'll have interest. And so far, it seems like they've, they've got interest, we just don't have an official commitment yet.
Okay, well, that'd be great if we did, because they're, it's a dead zone...
It is.
...in that area, so that'd be, that'd be, that'd be super. And I think it would really help lost, people that get lost hiking, or whatever they're doing in the mountains there, when they're visiting, so.
It does provide, if, if we do get cellular coverage there, that will give some coverage to that park area where we have a lot of hikers and a lot of our searches, so we're really hoping that, that that works out.
Mr. Chairman, you made reference to getting their road started, finished before December. It feels like October outside today.
Yeah.
So they better hurry.
Yeah. Okay, anybody got anything yet? Okay, thank you, Joey. Sounds great. Okay, so next is the discussion or adjustment of the agenda. We do need to do, I would like to request a motion in a second to add the following item to the regular agenda, and we'll make this number three, is the request, and the request is for approval of the 2025-2026 Southwest, Southwestern North Carolina Home Consortium Annual Action Plan, and it'll be presented by Lainey Schuler, who's here. We, we, you know, we only have one meeting in July, and I'm sure that kind of got us jammed up a little bit, and we, we need to get this approved. HUD has a, has a deadline, and our meeting will have, be past the deadline, so can I have that motion?
I'm making a motion to adjust the agenda to facilitate Ms. Schuler and the home consortium item you mentioned.
Okay, so, any, okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll add that to number three. Okay, then next, does anyone want to have any other discussion or adjustment of the agenda? Okay, next is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on those three items, on the consent agenda? Hearing now, and I'll entertain a motion. We have proved the consent agenda is presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Next order of business is regular agenda. First item is to request approval of a resolution approving the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy and Sackler family settlement agreement and authorizing participation in related opioid settlements. So Brian, I think you're going to discuss this with us.
Yeah, Frank is in court next door, so I have to pinch it. This is a lot like other items we've brought to you in reference to the ongoing opioid settlements. This one is probably one of the larger, in the Purdue Pharma or Sackler family. So if, if you approve this resolution, we can participate in the settlements, and this also gives me authority to sign all the documents necessary. But this is a requirement by the, the council that is representing the states and counties for us to be part of the settlement.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
No, just, just a comment, the NCAA, they, they stay on top of things like this, and I'm very, very familiar with the proceedings that we're undertaking today, so...
Okay, great. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve item one of the regular agenda? Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any, any discussion at all? Okay, all those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. The second item is to request approval of a settlement of collections, 2024-2025, our tax collector, Sebastian Cothran, is here this morning. Welcome, Sebastian.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm here today to request approval of the 2024 settlement of collections. So our net levy for the year was $52,207,131. We collected $51,182,556 for a collection rate of 98.04%. So as of June 30th, the remaining balance for 2024 taxes was $1,024,575. For the year, we did 176 wage garnishments, 404 bank attachments. We actually started doing unclaimed cash garnishments, which I did six of those, which are a lot smaller amounts, but we may start doing more of those in the future. We have, we had 278 payment plans for the year, and people can still come in and set up payments. I mean, some of those aren't active anymore because they paid off, but that's how many we had on the year. And then we have 155 people on our ACH program, where it's automatically drafted, where that's a sort of a payment plan as well, where it just comes out every month on the 15th. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Anything?
98.04, that's, is that on par with what we've been doing, or have you seen any change?
Last year, we had 98.19, so it is down a little bit, but I've been, what I've been hearing, like some of the towns, because I try to communicate with them, is they're also down, and it's, it's common right now with the economy how it is and the floods as well, because this is the first year after the, for the flood properties as well.
Right, considering what the county's been through and our folks have been through, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, we're still, I think this year is the fifth highest all time, so we're still up there. It's just, it is down this year, about a tenth and a half, which is about $75,000.
You mentioned the program where tax payments are deducted from an account on the 15th of the month. Is that something that a resident can set up in advance of a tax bill, or is that once the tax bill goes in arrears?
I mean, you can do it in advance. A lot of people just do it year-round, and they keep it going all the time, which sometimes we tell them they need to do it that way if they're really far behind, and some, a lot of people do prepay throughout the year, so when...
But that is a service that is offered through the tax office, right?
Yes. We just need to order a check, or a bank letterhead, and then...
So that's helpful.
We can help determine an amount, and we do that.
Sebastian, refresh my memory, is that, the 98.04%, does that include the payment plan and, and all that, the one that's taken, taken out on the 15th?
Yes, so that's everything that was levied for the whole year. We've already, as of June 30th, we had collected 98.04% of what the levy was, which, over time, it, I don't report the numbers, because, I mean, you guys say them on your reports every month, but for the fiscal year, that's what it was, it's 98% of what you, what you guys levied.
That's what you're saying.
Yes.
Probably ain't too bad, I mean, like, like Commissioner Long, or whoever said it, especially with the flood situation, to be at that percentage, you know, it's concerning when it's lower, but to be where we were at with all the flood...
Yeah. Well, I know just per perspective, like, the 21 levy, which was the highest all time at 98.4, there was only 67 enforcements done the whole year, and we did over, we did 580 this year, and we still, our rate was still down.
Right, that's pretty good.
It shows the, the struggles that some people are facing.
So of the 500, you say 504 enforcements?
580.
580 enforcements, is there, is there a trend in what's, in those, I mean, that you can identify? Is it, I guess, related to the flood? You know where I'm trying to go with this, like, is there something...
Well, I'm trying to give more grace to people with, had the flood properties. I mean, they still have to pay, and they need to pay, but...
Sure.
I mean, there is, I've seen a lot of properties that do have delinquent taxes. Like, if you look at, I saw when the town of Clyde advertised in the paper, there's a lot more than usual for such a small town, but...
Yeah.
I mean, and all those probably weren't, like, if people have social security, we can't take it, so all those didn't result in us getting funds, but we try to, at least, we do try to set up payment plans first, or, we don't like to have to take money directly out of people's bank accounts, but sometimes we have to.
Well, that speaks a lot about the work that's happening in your office if enforcements are up that high. Yeah. It's really concerning, honestly, when you think about, I mean, you, that's, you're doing a good job. That's not what I was implying by, by enforcing those, but that really is, it speaks a lot about, you know, I guess where our community is if we're having to... about, you know, I guess where our community is if we're having to implement that many enforcements.
You know, it makes it tough when you, somebody's lost everything they had or lost their entire home or part of their home and then we're coming after them saying, hey, we, we still want your taxes, but.
Anytime, even after we do that, I mean, it can be stopped if they'll just come in and make arrangements. I mean, even after we send a bank attachment out, we can, they can come in and we can fax to their bank to release it if they want to set up payments. I mean, a lot of people, I think, think once that happens, that's, yeah, but they can still come in and make arrangements and we're still happy to work with them.
I, I guess that's where I was headed. You took the words out of my mouth, but even though it is tough, if, if they'll just come in and, and talk with you, I know that, that.
Yeah, the biggest thing is.
It's obvious that you're working with everybody trying to help them resolve.
Yeah, the biggest thing is if, if they're far behind and they know that they're on limited means or something, they just need to stay in contact with us and communicate because that's when we have to start doing these things, when they ignore, like the late notices and ignore communications and just don't reach out, that's when we have to start doing these things. But, if they'll stay in contact and, and work with us, we're happy to work with them.
Yeah, that's, that's very important messaging that we're, that we, meaning you, are willing to work with people and get them on payment plans. And I, I don't know that I was even aware that there was that monthly option in advance and that, you know, when people pay their mortgages off or, I know I saw that with insurance because a lot of times your mortgage, your tax, your taxes and your homeowner's insurance are all lumped together. And so, when people would pay their mortgages off, that was a little bit of an adjustment sometimes of how they were going to manage paying their homeowners and their taxes. So, it's good that we offer that, that option as well.
Sebastian, do you see anything in the future where, after this storm, where all these properties are damaged and stuffed? Do you, do you see any kind of signs of having a hard time next year?
Yeah, well, I can say this year because unfortunately, the, the values are based on the first of the year, so all these people have full values, but next year, I'll see where the assessments went down. But, there's still flood properties than Fred that are, that we're, we're having issues with because the, like I know the flood buyout, there's, some of those still haven't happened with the Fred properties, so it's going to be a while probably on some of these properties.
What happens about the ones that are destroyed that, that have not been bought out yet? What, what do they do in a situation like that?
I mean, we're still happy to work with them, but, I mean, I understand that they're working with them, which we do have some that are on payments for that, but, I mean, it's, they still have to pay taxes. It'll be a reduced amount because their assessment will have dropped, but, I mean, if you own it, you still have to pay taxes. It's unfortunate, but it's.
So, on the properties that are involved in the buyout, if the property owner is in a situation where they are delinquent on their taxes and the buyout is completed, is there some sort of award back for the balance to the county or is that just on the individual to take care of what they owe? How does that work?
What I've heard is it's handled at closing, because of what I've heard is the property will go through like a standard closing.
Okay.
And it will get handled then.
Just like it would be if it was a private party sale.
As far as I know, that's what I've heard, yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, everyone's pretty well got your questions answered. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other, anything? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we've added item three to the regular agenda, which would be to approve the 2025, 2026 Southwestern North, North Carolina Home Consortium Annual Action Plan. So, Lene, if you, if you want to come up, we, just as a little bit of background, was a public hearing was held on June 2nd to receive public comment regarding the allocation of $625,690 and the public comment period concluded on July 4th. So, and we need this before August 16th, it looks like. Now, did you have any comments at all?
We did not, no sir.
Okay, we don't think we did. We didn't, didn't we Hannah? I mean, Haven? Haven, we didn't have any comments, right? Okay. I always call her Hannah, I don't know why.
Easily done. Well, thank you all too for, for adding us on and being flexible for that. Just as a brief background, the Southwestern NC Home Consortium is comprised of the seven western counties and the municipalities therein. The consortium does receive the home funds from HUD. That's used to provide grants to local governments, nonprofits, developers on a reimbursable basis with a focus on providing affordable housing and housing assistance for low to moderate income populations in our region. As Commissioner Inslee did say, I was here with you on June 2nd for that public hearing. We did host our public comment period from June 2nd to July 4th. No comments were received. We advertised the plan on our website, social media, and of course, amongst Haywood County. As stated, the allocation is $625,690 and some 80 cents tacked on there at the end. With the board's approval, we will fund new rental development as well as tenant-based rental assistance through an annual application cycle that'll be held in the spring of 2026. These funding activities were carefully selected by the consortium board to strategically align with our five-year consolidated plan as well as reflect the most effective use based on the region's capacity. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have as well as ask the board to approve the 2025, 2026 Annual Action Plan.
Buddy? Okay, I know people need help. So, I'll entertain a motion. We approve newly added item three to the regular agenda.
I make a motion, we approve item number three.
Second.
Okay, any discussion at all? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, you're good to go.
Thank you, Lene.
Appreciate y'all coming out. Okay, that concludes the items on the agenda. Do we have anything else? Have I missed anything, Haven? Okay. Okay, does any of the commissioners have anything? Okay, hearing now and I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, everyone be safe.